Ed?
Thank you, Chairman. This is to advise that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star-Ledger, Asbury Park Press, Courier-News, Daily Record, Home News Tribune, The Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald. It was posted in the Essex County Hall of Records here in Newark and on the bulletin board of the Lieutenant Governor in Trenton.
Thank you very much. Would everyone please rise for the flag salute? Fudge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, in the public, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Now Ted, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chairman. I'll call the subregions first and then the agencies. Bergen County?
Present.
Essex?
Here.
Hudson? Hunterdon? Jersey City?
Present.
Middlesex County?
Here.
Monmouth? Morris County?
Here.
City of Newark?
Present.
Ocean County?
Here.
Passaic County?
Here.
Somerset County?
Present.
Sussex County?
Here.
Union County?
Here.
And Warren County?
Here.
Now the agencies, Governor's Office?
Here.
New Jersey Transit?
Here.
Port Authority?
Here.
And Citizens Rep? We have a quorum, Chairman.
Thank you, Ted. Next is the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions to the minutes of the January 8th Board Meeting? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Middlesex motions?
Morris second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Now we'll move on to Chair's remarks. I'd like to take this opportunity to present my report. Once again, I'd like to thank my fellow Board members for entrusting me with the position of Chair. I am honored to lead this Board and look forward to working with all of you. I also want to recognize the Board members who have agreed to serve as our new Committee Chairs and Vice Chairs. My thanks go to Warren County Commissioner Jason Sernowski and Union County Commissioner Betty Jane Kurwowski for taking on the roles of Chair and Vice Chair respectively of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. Middlesex County Commissioner Charles Kenny and Hunterdon County Commissioner Susan Soloway for serving as Chair and Vice Chair of the Project Prioritization Committee. And Morris County Commissioner Stephen Shaw and Somerset County Commissioner Sarah Suie for serving as Chair and Vice Chair of the Freight Initiatives Committee. You all did a great job leading last month's meetings, and I thank you for your dedication to this Board. For anyone who is interested, you can find the full list of committee assignments on our website and in the updated Board Handbook, which is also online. I also want to take a moment to thank Eric Zimmerman, who recently became Executive Director of the National Association of Regional Councils, for being here today to speak with us about the latest developments in federal transportation policy and funding. While the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act provides transportation funding through November 2026, discussions about reauthorizations are already underway. I look forward to hearing more about how this can benefit our region. But first, I'd like to take a few moments to discuss my own priorities as Chairman of this Board. Through its long-range plan, NJTPA strives to improve safety and accessibility while also reducing congestion. These are also my top priorities, particularly when it comes to my home county of Ocean and Route 9. As the population in Ocean County grows, the gridlock along this critical corridor continues to get worse. We've also seen an increase in the number of people walking and biking, especially in Lakewood Township. Our infrastructure needs to ensure that people can get to where they need to go safely and efficiently regardless of their travel mode. Reduction in this congestion will also improve air quality for residents in the communities along Route 9. Ocean County has been doing what it can to address this issue, including making improvements to adjacent county roads and working with NJTPA on a 2016 study of Route 9 that recommended strategies for improving travel in Lakewood and Tom's River, such as adding turn lanes, shoulders, and sidewalks. Unfortunately, since this study was completed, the severe traffic congestion has extended south of Tom's River through Lacy Township. The New Jersey Department of Transportation had plans to make improvements that would address some of these concerns. However, that project has since been scaled back and, as it stands, will not do enough to improve conditions. I'm hopeful that we can work with the new Commissioner of Transportation to address this longstanding issue. I'm going to tell you how longstanding it is. I've been on the Board since 1993, and we've been talking about Route 9 in all that time and before I was elected to the Board. Other than the Garden State Parkway, Route 9 is the only north-south artery that runs the entire length of Ocean County, and it serves as an emergency evacuation route. In its current state, Route 9 doesn't provide the safety features needed to move large numbers of motorists during times of natural disasters, such as forest fires and hurricanes, making us rely on the Garden State Parkway. In fact, it doesn't move the large number of motorists at key times of the day without any natural disasters. The Jersey Shore is a key tourist destination that then generates significant revenue for the state of New Jersey. It is critical to our region that we ensure people can travel to and from the shore safely and evacuate efficiently if needed due to flooding or any other natural disaster. On the topic of natural disaster, I'd also like this Board to continue to focus on resiliency. It's critical that we harden our region's infrastructure to withstand extreme weather events. While this is particularly important in a coastal county like Ocean, it is increasingly an issue throughout the entire region. As the NJTPA prepares to update its long-range transportation plan over the next year, I'm sure we'll be hearing a lot about ways we can address congestion and improve resiliency and mobility for all travelers. I'm hopeful that Route 9 and other key corridors in our region can get the priority, attention, and investment they deserve. I also want to take just a moment to thank NJDOT for working with Ocean County to authorize $2.5 million in late December to upgrade more than 200 traffic signals along 18 county roads. This project, funded through NJTPA's Transportation Clean Air Measures Program, will optimize signals to improve the flow of traffic and help reduce vehicle emissions. We are hopeful we can finalize the contract and get work started in the coming weeks. NJTPA staff is working with NJDOT and other subregions to get similar projects authorized with funding from this program. Finally, I want to remind everyone that NJTPA recently began accepting applications for its Local Safety and High-Risk Rural Roads Program. This is another example of a program that puts federal dollars to work to improve safety on our roads. Over the years, Ocean County has been awarded funding for several projects to upgrade county roads, including adding turning lanes, pedestrian refuge islands, bicycle infrastructure, signal upgrades, and more. I encourage all the subregions to apply. Thank you, and that concludes my report. Now we'll move on to other reports. NJDOT, any remarks?
Not at this time.
Thank you. NJ Transit, any remarks?
Yes, sir.
Hey, they're nice, good reports. I like them. Port Authority, I understand the Port Authority would like to make remarks today. Is that a wrong understanding? I only read what it says.
Sorry, I'm not prepared at this time.
Okay, good. Thank you very much, and now we'll move on to David, who I'm sure will have a report for us. Would you kindly give us your report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo the Chair in thanking Eric Zimmerman for being here today and also congratulate him on his recent promotion to the position of Executive Director with the National Association of Regional Councils. You know, for those who don't know, NARC is an organization we've long been involved with and supported. They do a great job of ensuring that our interests as a regional planning organization are well-represented in Washington, D.C., and Congress, and in the policymaking activities of federal agencies. I think, as you'll hear from Eric, the IIJA, or Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, continues to provide historic funding for infrastructure investment and has been greatly beneficial to our region and the state of New Jersey. NJTPA's central staff will continue to support and facilitate efforts by our subregions, towns, and partner agencies to take advantage of these opportunities going forward. Most recently, we provided letters of support for raise grant applications submitted by the Port Authority and by Monmouth County. We also shared information on the Safe Streets for All Program, which has three application deadlines between April and August, and several counties and municipalities have been awarded grants under this program previously to support planning efforts. Once those safety plans, as well as ones that we're working on with our own funding with eight of our subregions, are substantially completed, those counties and municipalities will be eligible for federal grants for implementation and demonstration projects and additional planning. The development of NJTPA-supported local safety action plans is entering the crucial phase of creating local implementation committees comprised of elected officials and stakeholders in each of the eight subregions, who will help create these plans and advance their recommendations. Meeting should commence soon, and I certainly encourage the Board members in these subregions to support and participate in these committees. They will shape local safety efforts by gaining input, real-world conditions, and needs. Please let me know if you have any questions about the safety planning activities in your subregions. Another federal funding opportunity I wanted to mention is the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Program administered by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Under the terms of a grant received by New York City in October, central staff worked with the city and the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council, aka NMTIC, our counterparts in New York City, on a climate and air quality plan covering the Bay State Metropolitan Statistical Area. This priority climate action plan was shared with ARTAC and submitted by the March 1st deadline to the federal agency. It is available on our website. Plan identifies greenhouse gas reduction measures and strategies for the Bay State region and provides the foundation for development of a more in-depth, comprehensive climate action plan, which will be developed over the next two years approximately. We're at the beginning of a process that could help us make significant and much-needed steps to better address climate change in our region. We'll certainly keep the Board and the committees informed about this work. Another Bay State initiative is exploring the prospect for a shared-use path between the George Washington and Governor Mario M. Cuomo, formerly known as Tappan Zee Bridges. NMTIC is leading this effort, and they are hosting a series of virtual community visioning workshops for the project. The next one is Wednesday with another scheduled for March 20th. Details on those and how to join are on the web calendar on our website. You can also, you can read about other central staff activities in the highlights that we emailed on Friday. Of particular note, as the Chair mentioned, we've commenced a solicitation for local safety and high-risk rural roads programs. We look forward to your submissions. In recent weeks, as part of this program, public meetings were held for local safety projects now underway in Hudson County on Secaucus Road and John F. Kennedy Boulevard. This type of public information and outreach is an essential element of our work. We also have four local concept development studies now underway in Monmouth, Morris, Ocean, and Somerset Counties. They'll include similar public meetings and outreach. We've launched websites for each study, and the first round of meetings is being planned for later this spring. Our subregions are also encouraging public involvement for their NJTPA-funded planning studies or subregional studies. Recent public meetings and workshops were held for the Passaic County Strategic Infrastructure Investment Plan, the Monmouth Paths Access for All Study, and the Newark Bike Plan. As the Chair noted, we'll be updating our long-range transportation plan over the next year. This will include extensive public outreach, and we'll also be engaging Board members directly to seek your guidance as we develop our vision for the region. Two things I want to note before I wrap up. First, a reminder that Transaction, the state's annual transportation conference that we help plan, is being held April 30 through May 2 at Harrah's in Atlantic City. I want to thank several Board members who are moderating sessions featuring NJTPA projects and programs. Includes Chairman Kelly, Commissioner Kenny, Commissioner Shaw. Thank you all very much. I also want to thank Eric Powers from NJDOT, who will be joining us at Transaction and moderating a roundtable discussion of the Executive Directors of the three metropolitan planning organizations that cover New Jersey, in addition to NJTPA, that's South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization, the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. If you are planning to attend, please check out these sessions and stop by our booth in the exhibit hall. And then finally, I just want to note that we have updated the Board of Trustees Handbook. You can find on our website. It was also emailed to all the Board members and alternates in ARTAC with the Central Staff Highlights on Friday. A link to that. The handbook has a lot of information. It's a great resource. I hope you'll find it helpful. With that, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you, David. Any questions from Board members for the Executive Director? Seeing none, we will move on. Now we're going to have our guest speaker. We'll hear about federal transportation funding and policy from our speaker, Eric Zimmerman, the newly-installed Executive Director of the National Association of Regional Councils. Prior to becoming the Executive Director earlier this month, Eric served as the Association's Deputy Executive Director, and his work focused on transportation. In addition to his transportation policy expertise, he also has extensive experience in issues related to the federal budget and appropriations. Please welcome Eric.
All right. Thank you very much, Chairman, and the rest of the Board for the invitation to be here and to Dave and his team, and also want to say thank you for that, the ongoing and longstanding relationship between NJTPA and NARC. We appreciate that. As a membership organization, you know, really important that we have active and great members to represent, so very pleased for that. So, Mr. Chairman, I was so excited to get up here that I ran, as soon as you mentioned my name earlier, I ran right up to the podium. So, that shows you the enthusiasm I have for everything going on in Washington right now. Of course, I'm going to be touching today on the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the $1.2 trillion investment that was made about two and a half years ago now. We're coming quickly to the halfway mark, so I'm going to touch a little bit on current implementation and then talk a little bit, since we're sort of at the halfway point, the leverage point between the two, and look back a little bit at what we're doing currently and then look ahead as to what reauthorization looks like as we, as we move forward. I don't think my clicker has worked.
There we go. Something's...
Hey.
There we go.
All right. So, one of the hallmarks of the IIJA was the implementation of a tremendous number discretionary grant programs, basically competitive programs that require an application and then a decision made by USDOT or some of the other agencies that are representing the IIJA about who gets the funding. So I went through quickly to take a look of the 18 programs where MPOs are eligible recipients. There are currently four programs under which MPOs have directly received a grant, and that includes reconnecting communities where there was one MPO that received a grant through the Federal Railroad Administration. There's eight programs in which MPOs, although eligible, did not receive a grant. Six programs that there has been no grants awarded, a couple where they just, there isn't even any information yet about implementation, and some others that there's NOFOs, the funding announcement is out, but they haven't made any final decision. So, and I'm not going to pretend like this tells the entire story, because there's plenty of projects, as Dave mentioned, where there's support from the MPO for a local project, and so the local recipient may have gotten something. But I think it does illustrate a little bit of some of the challenge that, that always comes with discretionary grant programs. We're, we're big proponents of formula funding, where money goes out and everybody across the nation gets some funding and for whatever particular program we're talking about. And I know that there's definitely some worthy programs that are discretion, you know, that are receiving discretionary funding, and we'll talk a little bit about what we might do with some of those and, you know, but ultimately, it's really formula funding where, where, where we, we like to see the focus of these funds go. But that, that gives you a little bit of a, of a rundown, from the MPO perspective at least, on how some of the funding is going under, under IIJA. So there's a number of concerns that have been raised from, that I hear quite a bit from members, and I, you know, I don't want to come away from this sounding, sounding too negative, because I think there's lots of opportunities, you know, continuing with IIJA and then as we look forward. Certainly, one is that there's a lot, even though there's a lot of eligibility for local entities and for MPOs, that perhaps we still continue to focus on, on sending money to state DOTs and perhaps a little bit, too little to, to MPOs. Cities have, have done reasonably well under some of the programs in IIJA. I think there's an argument that counties have actually done, have not done, have not fared quite as well, and that's an area of interest and, and concern. That grant applications are fairly expensive and cumbersome in, in order to put together, which actually has its own equity component. One of the things that the IIJA is seeking to do is make sure that communities of all sizes and types and, you know, are able to, to access some of these funds. But at the end of the day, when you have an expensive application process, communities that are, that are less resourced are going to have a harder time succeeding under that kind of a, under that kind of a, of a process. And while we're seeing grant awards coming fairly consistently, I think DOT has done a pretty admirable job reviewing, first of all, getting, standing these programs up. Many of these were brand-new programs, dozens of them. They've done a good job standing those up and getting the funding opportunities out and even making awards. The one, the place where we're really seeing a slowdown is in actually getting grant agreements on the ground. So they're announcing who, which projects are getting funding, but then it's taking a year, sometimes even 18 months, in order to get grant agreements in place that will actually allow the funding to hit the ground. A little bit of a lack of consistency in NOFO timing. They're sometimes putting out two, even in some cases, three years' worth of funding in, in one funding opportunity, and that's been a concern. And then some local recipients that are receiving federal dollars, this creates, the IIJA creates a structure where local communities have a much greater chance of accessing funding directly, but some of them are not understanding that by receiving that funding, they're actually entering into a relationship with the Federal Highway Administration or, or USDOT, which is a, a new thing to navigate. Federal funding is not particularly straightforward. It's a challenging world to navigate, and that's something that, that we've heard about as well. And then, of course, local macho is, always something that, that, that folks have a challenge with in many places. But there's, like I said, there's plenty of positives. Obviously, there's lots of funding. We're, we're opening up new opportunities for cities or counties to access federal funding directly to meet their own priorities, and it cuts across a broader array of programs. We're seeing focus in some areas that I think there's, there's a lot of interest in and a recognized need for some action, and the IIJA worked hard to, to meet the need in some of those areas that perhaps we had not been focusing on as much. And I think the opportunities going forward might include turning some of those discretionary grants into formula programs and then making some changes to, some of the programs to make them, especially the ones that are sort of inherently regional or local, to make them function a little bit more regionally and locally. So as I mentioned, the tide in DC is starting to turn already from a focus on implementation to one on reauthorization. We're about to hit the half-life of IIJA, occurs in May 2024. That's the two-and-a-half-year mark on this five-year bill, and I think this is, we're facing a more interesting reauthorization than we usually do. First off, the size of the bill, $1.2 trillion, makes it a different beast than we typically face when we're just talking about transportation reauthorization. The breadth of this program extends well beyond just transportation into some other areas. It's a question of how many of those other areas are we going to continue to support in the, in the, in the future legislation? And, and so there's, there's, there's some big questions surrounding, you know, which pieces this, which pieces of the IIJA are going to be preserved and which might, might, might be foregone? So there's some big-picture issues I'm going to talk a little bit about. I'm going to stay away from the political, because frankly, I don't predict the future. I would love to, but I don't. So obviously, it's going to be different if, if it's the second term of President Biden or, or a second term of President Trump, and it's certainly going to be different depending on which party is running each chamber. And in fact, as we look ahead, we're probably going to see two changes, we're going to see two elections before we actually get to reauthorization. So we'll have this next upcoming election in November, and then it'll most likely be the election after that that actually determines who's going to be in charge when we're really getting into the conversation about reauthorization. So that's so far in the future that we simply don't know where we're going to be at that point. So some of the funding issues that we're talking about, this part, this, this bill, as I mentioned, has an enormous baseline. I think there's a lot of interest in preserving as much of that baseline as possible for transportation shore, but also for some of the other programs that are also part of the IIJA. There was also a very interesting approach taken by Congress in funding this bill. They used something that we've never seen used at this magnitude before called guaranteed appropriations. Basically, what that was is it was a check written to these programs at the outset. As soon as the bill passed, that funding was essentially available for spending, unlike what we typically see with programs like this, including the transportation program, where they authorize in advance funding, but that still requires additional activity later by Congress to say, okay, here, the money is now let. In this case, the funding was made available immediately upon the bill passing. There's a lot of people that really like that process. They really like not having to worry about obligation authority and some of the other structures that come with the program as, you know, with some of the programs that we've had in the past. So it's going to be interesting to see if Congress decides to continue to use that, that guaranteed appropriation process. And of course, there's the Highway Trust Fund I'll talk a little bit about in just a minute. Our, you know, endlessly-going-broke savings account where all the funding, or all the funds from our gas, our fuel taxes end up, that ostensibly is there to pay for the transportation program, has fallen woefully short, continues to fall woefully short of actually funding the full transportation program, something that continues to get kicked, the can, and that continues to get kicked down the road. We'll see what they decide to do there, and if we'll start a serious conversation about what's next, which could include mileage-based user fees, where folks pay by the mile instead of paying by the gallon of fuel that they purchase. And then some of the structural issues, I'll get into a little bit more on some of the unspent balances, this idea of discretionary versus formula, and then the direct access of local government, of local governments to some of this funding. But first, I do want to touch on the Highway Trust Fund. You can see the red line is sort of a continuation of the spending that is going on in the IIJA into the future, and the blue lines represent the declining level of income coming into the Highway Trust Fund from fuel taxes, of course, starting to decline precipitously in part because of the change to electric vehicles, which pay no fuel tax. And you can see the yawning gap between the red line and the blue lines, which shows the, the deficit that we face each year in transportation. So as we look ahead, oops, you can see that for the next five-year reauthorization cycle, we're projected to be approximately $187 billion short in the Highway Trust Fund, which would require either a massive increase in the fuel taxes, I don't even know if we could increase it enough to really capture that in any realistic way, or more likely continue to do what we've been doing the last dozen or so years in transferring enormous amounts of money from the general fund into the Highway Trust Fund to cover that gap. All right, so quickly through some of the big-picture issues, that idea of preserving the baseline, preserving those guaranteed appropriations. A big issue that I think we face at the local level, but also at the state level, are some of the unspent balances. There is a huge influx of funding. Folks expected very, to very quickly gear up and be ready to spend a lot of money that, that frankly, had never really flowed in, in their direction before, at least not in these quantities. And I think there's, there's a concern that if those funds don't get spent down, Congress is going to look at that and say, well, why would we give you more money if you're not able to spend the money that we're giving you? So hoping that we can create perhaps some, some better support for, especially for communities that haven't received direct funding before, for MPOs perhaps, but even for states to get that money out the door as quickly as possible. As I mentioned, the, the opportunity of taking a look at programs, discretionary programs of some... of some type are really thought of as a a way to get some funding out the door for a particular purpose. And in many cases, you know, our feeling is that if it's important enough, transportation safety would be a great example. What we should do is we should formulate programs that are of particular value nationwide to make sure that funding is getting out to everybody for those programs, especially the ones that we've established are are working well, including the Safe Streets and Roads For All is, I think, a great example of that, where funding is is going directly to locals to meet important transportation safety needs. And we need to continue to bolster that, but I think expand that so that everybody is getting a piece of that pie, not just those that are able to get through the discretionary grant process. And then, as I mentioned, the opportunity for local governments to have a little bit more direct access to some of these funding, I think it expands greatly the the base of eligible entities and therefore the folks that are engaging with the process. I don't think that that's a bad thing at all. I think that's a great thing. I think it expands the support for the program to have cities and counties that are directly benefiting from the program. As I mentioned, the the award decisions are moving, but the 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 grant agreements are really not. And I think there's an interest in retaining this direct funding among the cities and counties, of course, and the and the associations that represent them in Washington. So I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. And I think the real opportunities that lie before us are are outlined here. First, you know, we, a lot of the focus is going to be on discretionary grant programs because that's the, that was sort of the the big new thing that happened on IIJA. But I don't want us to lose focus on some of the important areas that are still vital aspects of the transportation program. First and foremost, from an MPO perspective, is the transportation planning funding. That goes directly to to keeping the lights on and the doors open at each MPO across the nation. We also want to improve MPO access to the programs that are retained in IIJA that are carried over from IIJA to the next reauthorization. Expand the amount of formula funding and then expand these, the sort of walled-off programs. I I put that in quotes, but one of the nice things about the Safe Streets and Road, Safe Streets program is that it's only MPOs and locals that are eligible for that. And so finding ways to to look at those types of programs that are inherently local, inherently regional in scope, including some safety programs, access programs, carbon reduction, innovation in smart cities, and then the nexus between housing and transportation. How do we better support all of those initiatives at the local level? Can we find some other opportunities where where funding is explicitly rolling to locals and MPOs for those purposes? And then figuring out ways to expand MPO opportunities within the bill. And then really importantly, and I'll I'll close with this, is but one of the things we're going to need to do in order to show Congress that we we need to support a robust program going forward, we need to preserve those baselines, we need to do all the things that we hope that they do in supporting a a large piece of legislation going forward is really accentuating the wins that came out of IIJA and that will continue to come out of this program. And that's where we can use all of your help in making sure that the grants that you're receiving or the formula funding that you're receiving, that you're letting the world know the great work that you're doing with that, you're letting members of Congress know the great work that you're doing with that, and you're really pounding on the idea that with these additional funds, great things are happening at the local level and at the regional level because they need to hear that message. It's a really important part of bolstering Congress and encouraging them to to support this legislation going forward. So with that, I will say thank you, and I will continue to hit the wrong button. Thank you very much for having me here today, and I look, if I have any time, I'm happy to answer questions.
Good. So does any member of the boards have any questions for the executive director?
Chairman?
So I did, I was not aware of the distinction with the guaranteed appropriations in that bill. So if it's not reauthorized, where's that money? What happens to it? Does it get clawed back?
No, it's it's still there for the purpose that it was intended. So even without a reauthorized program, the funding that was provided this time around would would still be there. Yeah, yeah. And they put some time structure. They kind of said, you know, this much for each year, but otherwise, that that funding is there and will be there for, you know, until it's. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions from the public?
No, thanks. Interesting discussion. Appreciate it. Couple of things, and maybe these are questions maybe to react to, but one issue we've certainly seen, the issue of local match, even eighty, twenty, if you're talking about the dollar amount, that can be a challenge. And then I think the other key piece that I would just think thinking about is sort of the distribution over years, right? So it takes a certain amount of, talking about a hundreds of millions of dollars, billions of dollars project, there's a certain amount of time to develop preliminary plans, to go through environmental, all these things. And so sort of how to convey to Washington. You might not spend that billion all at once, but really, the way these projects go is if there's a steady flow over a number of years that's predictable, right? That's how we can advance projects. We can't justify spending preparatory money for one of these large projects if you don't know that the rest is. And so how do we explain that that these are, you know, multi-Congress, you know, there's over many terms of a congressperson's life, you know, that that's really how these things, we're talking about the big stuff. That's really how it gets.
Sure.
One big challenge, but it's that consistency.
Yeah. So first, the local match, definitely hearing that from some quarters, that that is a challenge for for some communities, for many communities to meet. I think that's something we need to face head on. We need to figure out, there's, there, there has to be a set of programs. Can't let local match be the impediment, having funding flow. Again, I'm thinking of some of the, like, transportation safety is a good example. And so making sure that we're being smart about, yes, of course, we want local buy-in, but not to the extent that we're preventing a community from doing the needed and critical safety or other upgrade along the way and preventing that from happening. I think being being thoughtful about that, finding some ways to to potentially reduce the local match, have a sliding scale. There's, there's definitely some opportunities for discussion on that point, and I think Congress is open to listening to some of those ideas. And then on your second point, I think it's very well made. One of the challenges with a piece of legislation like this, where you haven't had consistent and sustained and large funding, and all of a sudden, it sort of drops in your lap, the 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 project pipeline isn't filled, right? There's been no reason to spend money on preliminary engineering and all the other things to prepare a project, even get it into the queue, because there was no real feeling that you could get it funded over any period of time. And so it would be a shame to now provide the funding for only these first five years and then sort of take it all away again, because now the pipeline is starting to get filled. People are seeing that there's an opportunity in certain areas to get projects done. They're starting to put the effort and time and and money into into getting those projects ready. And then all of a sudden, you're going to take away the the source of funding that they might actually use to 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 get those projects built. So I think that's a a great argument for continuing some of the robust investment that this bill contains. And I think it it's one of those areas where it generates a lot of excitement because now people are starting to to do that that filling of the pipeline and that, you know, sort of makes you dream a little bit bigger, right? Here are the things that we might be able to do if if we had those additional resources that that we could do that with.
I have a quick question. Hi, Philores Wood, City of Newark. Thank you for being here. Very good presentation. In the future, as as the program moves on and and seeks longevity, are there any plans to structure a tier level per application? And I mean, the City of Newark finds challenges all the time because our projects are very dynamic and, you know, with with having ports and and airports and, you know, our municipality is is a little more complex than other municipalities. None of the projects are not difficult because they're all difficult across the board. But is there any plans to establish a set of of tiers per applicant so that we can better gauge how we land with everybody else, maybe similar cities across the the country as opposed to just regionally?
I think that's a great idea. I think it's something, I think the more feedback communities are receiving on their applications is really important. Of course, each community can go in and and ask for an sort of an after-action report, whether you were successful in your grant application or not. But I don't think that quite gets to the level of understanding that your question implies. And so I think, again, I think Congress is looking for feedback about ways to improve the process. You both want to be careful because you don't want, frankly, you don't want too simple of a of an application process. You need some vetting of projects. I think we're seeing now what happens. There's probably some projects that have been let to communities that frankly just were simply not prepared to receive them. I don't put that on the community. I put that on, you know, I think that falls more firmly with USDOT in doing its vetting. So there has to be a certain amount of vetting, but I think also within that can be a certain amount of understanding if you aren't, especially if you're not successful, sort of how you measured up. And so I think that's, that's great feedback. I think Congress would be interested in hearing an idea like that to make sure that communities, if they're going to invest the time and money, which is real, and they aren't successful, that they're improving their chances of success, you know, down the line in future applications, whether for that same grant program or or something else, you can learn along the way. So I think that's a, that's a great suggestion.
And the other board member with questions? And now it's your turn.
Basically, it was the same, similar question as the director. Only thing I would add is the timelines, if you're going to get MPO input, and evaluate the timelines that seems like arbitrarily assigned to communities, like we're different from suburban Somerville, something like that, may take a little time, a little more bureaucracy than normal, and we're getting judged on suburban timelines rather than urban timeline. Yeah, that'd be just fine.
Yeah. And also, as I, I think I mentioned in the presentation too, some of the, bringing a little bit more consistency to the approach on on the nofoes as well. You know, I just think the more sort of predictability, you know, the better understanding folks have of the application process. And of course, that also comes with time. I mean, really, we're talking about, at most, we're into the third round of awards under some of these programs. Some of them, as I mentioned, there's two that we still don't have any information about from DOT as to how they're going to function. And then there's several others where we're just now getting to the nofo phase two and a half years in. And that's not a criticism, that's just a reality. When there's that many programs to stand up, you have to prioritize internally at DOT which ones you're going to roll out. So, you know, in in those cases, we're really still in the first cycle of funding. And so I think we're going to improve these, some of these processes over time, now that DOT is fully staffed, now that we have a better understanding of of what the the sort of flow is going to be on some of these, you know, and once we get to sort of a full blossoming of all of the programs out there, I think we can start to to get a little bit more consistent, have a little bit more predictability in the application process so that everybody, from the communities to the MPO if they need to be involved, to the state, you know, everybody kind of knows what they need to do and when they need to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members that are public? And then we thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Okay. We'll now move on to committee reports and action items, and we'll start with Commissioner Charles Kenny, who will give us the project prioritization committee report.
Good morning, and thank you, Chairman. I'm pleased to report the activities of Project Prioritization Committee. The committee considered two action items at the February joint meeting. First involves minor amendments to the fiscal year 2024, 2027 Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. They add two New Jersey Department of Transportation projects, first being the Portway-Fish House Road, Pennsylvania Ave. in Hudson County, and the second being Route Nine, Rock Morton Lane, Tyse's, Tyse Town Road, the Poor Farm Road, and Harte Lane in Middlesex County. These projects were originally authorized in the fiscal year 2023 TIP, but needed to be added to the current TIP due to delays in authorization and need for additional federal funding. Portway-Fish House Road project requires an additional $6.7 million for utilities and construction in the current fiscal year, and the Route Nine project needs $6 million for construction this year. This is the, this is listed as action item number one on the agenda. Second item is approval of two fiscal year 2025 freight concept development program studies. This program advances regional and local freight initiatives identified through previous freight planning studies. The NJTPA, in coordination with RTAC, developed a project intake process for the program. In the latest round, the process led to the selection of two projects, Southern Middlesex County, North and South Truck Quarter Project in Cranberry and Monroe Townships, and the Hanover Avenue Bridge Canary Rail Clearance Project in Morris Plains in Morris County. These projects aim to improve truck traffic and rail clearance issues respectively. If approved by the board, central staff expects these studies to get underway early in the next fiscal year, which begins July 1st. This is listed as, excuse me, action item number two on the agenda. And this concludes the project prioritization committee report.
Okay, thank you. So you heard the two action items listed. Do we have a motion on action item number one?
Middlesex to make a motion.
Union seconds.
Okay, and can we have a roll call on that?
Sure, one second. So it was Middlesex to move and Union to second, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'll call the roll on PPC action one. Bergen County?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
City of Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Saig County?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
New Jersey Transit?
And the Port Authority?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. And the second item is action item number two, as Brad had reported on. Do we have a motion to adopt action item number two?
Morris will move that.
Saig seconds.
All right, I've got Morris moving and Saig second, correct?
Yes.
You ready for the roll, Chairman?
Please.
Bergen County?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris County?
Yes.
City of Newark?
Yes.
Ocean County?
Yes.
Saig?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
NJ Transit?
And the Port Authority?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the fiscal year 2025 Freight Concept Development Program. Now, wait a minute. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm looking for the Planning and Economic Development Committee. We'll hear from Betty Jane Kowalski. You'll give that report.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. I'm pleased to report on the activities of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. At the February joint meeting, the committee considered one action item, approval of the fiscal year 2025 Unified Planning Work Program, or UPWP, which will guide the work of central staff, subregions, and the eight transportation management associations for the fiscal year that begins July 1st of this calendar year. This document was distributed to the Board and RTAC in December for review. At the meeting, central staff informed the committee that feedback from various stakeholders led to slight budget adjustments. The overall budget decreased by 1%. There were adjustments to labor expenses based on the recent contract NJIT reached with the union representing the NJTPA's non-managerial staff, as well as minor changes to non-labor expenses, contractual costs, and administration fees. Central staff received comments on the draft work program related to expenditure allocations, climate change initiatives, and collaboration with federal land management agencies. Revised drafts of the budget in chapters one, two, and three, which highlighted the work of the central staff, regional pass-through programs, and the transportation management associations, were posted on the NJTPA website. Chapter four, which contains information about non-MPO-funded transportation planning activities in the region, such as those being completed by the New Jersey Turnpike Authority, NJ Transit, and Port Authority, is still under development. This is listed as action item three on today's agenda. At the meeting, Executive Director Dave Behrend also highlighted progress on the Hudson River Tunnel project. He said the Gateway Development Commission has awarded its first heavy construction construction He said the Gateway Development Commission has awarded its first heavy construction contract of $284 million to stabilize the riverbed on the Manhattan side, a critical component of the overall project. He also said that staff at NJTPA and the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council worked with the commission and the Federal Transit Administration to make technical corrections to their long-range transportation plans to ensure that they accurately reflect the project's funding and anticipated schedules. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Now, this committee has one action item on today's agenda, approval of the fiscal year 2025 Unified Planning Work Program, or UPWP. May I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Middlesex makes the motion.
Newark seconds.
I have Middlesex making the motion, and City of Newark second.
That's correct.
All right, we'll take the roll on PDC action three. Bergen County?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex County?
Yes.
Morris County?
Yes.
City of Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Saic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union County?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
New Jersey Transit?
Yes.
And the Port Authority?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, now I am very late on this, because it was on the next page, but do we have any comments from board members on this? Any comments from members of the public? Being none, we'll move on. We'll move on to freight initiatives, and I'll call on Commissioner Stephen Shaw, who will give the freight initiatives committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to report on the February 20th meeting of the Freight Initiatives Committee, which featured the committee's annual regional industrial real estate update. The update is always well-attended by many professionals to take advantage of the continuing education credits offered and the information disseminated. Our first speaker, Bill Waxman of Cushman &amp; Wakefield, said that despite facing headwinds in 2023, the industrial sector remains vibrant, driven largely by port activity. The port of New York, New Jersey is the busiest on the East Coast and within a one-day drive to one-third of the U.S. population. The industrial real estate market, he said, is settling into a new normal after a few frenetic years, with construction of new facilities tapering off. The supply of building space now outpaces demand, but rents continue to rise as more companies are downsizing and seeking more modern, efficient facilities that charge a higher rent per square foot. He predicted a continued slowing of new construction due to declining demand and increased difficulty in gaining municipal approvals. The second speaker, Eric N. Bernstein of Bernstein &amp; Associates, an attorney that represents several municipalities, said that in his opinion, the slowdown in the warehouse construction is a positive development. He said developers of facilities built on spec, that means without a committed tenant, often have not provided local officials with sufficient insight into the nature of the facilities and their potential impacts. He cautioned municipal leaders to be diligent and seek information about a variety of factors, excuse me, including facility type, exact location, hazardous materials, proximity to major thoroughfares, age-restricted communities, schools or places of worship, roadway width, availability of public transportation for the workforce, and many other issues. A recording of the presentation is available on the NJTPA website. In updates from members, the New Jersey Department of Transportation announced that the agency's next freight advisory committee will be held March 26th, featuring a presentation by Allison Dane Camden, the Deputy Assistant Secretary of the U.S. Department of Transportation for Multimodal Freight. Mr. Chairman, this concludes the Freight Initiatives Committee report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Steve on this? Members of the public? Being none, we'll move on to public participation. We now turn to the general public participation section of the meeting. As a reminder, we advise members of the public that we have a three-minute time limit on comments. The light on the timer will go from green to yellow when there are 30 seconds remaining, and then red when the three minutes is reached. We ask that you keep your comments within this allotted time. We will start with members of the public who are here in the room and have signed up to speak. Then we will call on those who signed up to participate remotely via Zoom. Ted, would you please call the first speaker who signed up to speak here in person?
Chairman Kelly, nobody has signed up in advance to speak, either in person or remotely.
You deserve a raise for that.
Make a note of that.
Yeah. Okay, so then we'll go to anyone on Zoom? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
For a second.
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, very good. Well, I'm down to the time and place of the next meeting. The next meeting of the NJTPA Board will be held here at the NJTPA offices in Newark on May 13th at 10:30 a.m. There's nothing further? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry, I checked my notes, and I believe I was supposed to have made a reminder earlier about the Midtown Bus Terminal replacement EIS.
Yeah, I told you you were supposed to.
Yep. My, my apologies. So the draft environmental impact statement was released on February 2nd, and the public comment period is still open. So anybody that wants to make comments on the draft EIS can visit the Port Authority website until March 18th at 5:00 p.m. So anybody that wants to make a comment, that needs to get done before close of business next Monday.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, anything further? Being none now.
Actually, that, that reminded me, a quick question. Does anybody know, is today the last day for comments on congestion pricing? I know that was an MTA. March 11th is sticking in my mind. Does anybody know?
I'm not sure, but everybody's pointing at somebody else.
I know Bergen County was actively.
Dan Exact testified last week.
Public comment process.
Opposed to congestion pricing.
Excellent.
We can get that for you real quick.
That answers your question.